So we're gonna have two council members. All right.
How are you?
Tired, my A18 went out.
Oh.
They still they take it.
It's gonna get cooler. You got one more day? Or if that's where.
He's on peace. That's just me.
I don't know. I killed a steak. Cooked it wrong.
Okay, uh, Tim.
Yes.
What's the anticipation of the future time?
We'll take it over, I don't know. Hour and a half. I'm being long. Hour and a half. She's gonna get you. We ain't falling around. Kevin, we're gonna start with privileges before. Could work backwards.
Motion to eliminate for seven hours, please.
Motion to adjourn, and then we'll go backwards.
There you go.
We are ready to go. Done. Mayor? Kramer? You ready? Kramer's there. All right. If all ready, please rise. Good evening. The Monday, July 8th, 2019 Common Council meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Reverend Chip Rouse. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you for inviting them. Let us pray. Spirit of life and death, source of change and infinite love. We are grateful for this day. We are grateful to be alive and as well as we are. We hold in our hearts the family of Officer Alan Wiggins. We desire comfort and support for his entire family as they grieve the death of his daughter. We pledge to hug our own loved ones and tell them what they mean to us because life is brief and precious. We hold in our hearts the family of Eric Logan. We desire that the special prosecutor's investigation be a real step toward accountability, transparency, and equity in relations among all our citizens. We are grateful for the increased attention that South Bend is getting due to Mayor Pete's candidacy. We desire to find the opportunities in this attention among its many challenges. May his candidacy and the work of these good council members bring greater prosperity, richer diversity, and liberty and justice for all. Guide these council members with compassion and courage. Amen. Ashay. So may we be.
Amen, thank you. If you would, please, uh, join me in a moment of silence for Rohim Mason, who he lost, um, in Lake Michigan, and also Officer Alan Wigan's daughter. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston is excused. Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Rosen?
Here.
Councilmember Techtu?
Here.
Councilmember Davis is excused as well. Councilmember Boardy?
Here.
Councilmember Furlic?
Here.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
President President.
Thank you. Roll call in subcommittee minutes, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the June 24th, 2019. Meeting minutes of the Common Council were possible to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Fowler, would you please read, uh, Special Business 1948?
Special Business, 1948. A special resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, honoring and wishing Dr. Kenneth Spels the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you. And I would like to recognize members of the, uh, South Bend Corporation School Board. Thank you for being here tonight and, uh... And the presenters.
Yes. My name is Karen L. White. I live at 1912 Melverne, here in the City of South Bend, 46614. I've asked Councilwoman Sharon McBride to join me, as well as our city clerk. I'll ask them to state the name and addresses at this time.
Thank you.
Kareem McFowler, South Bend City Clerk. Offices on the fourth floor of the County City Building.
Sharon McBride, Third District, Representative, 415 Broadway, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
I would like to say that it is indeed an honor to be able to recognize Dr. Kenneth Spels, uh, the former superintendent of the South Bend Community School Corporation. And this particular resolution is in honor of Dr. Spels. And it reads as such: "A special resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, honoring and wishing Dr. Kenneth Spels the very best. Whereas, Dr. Kenneth Spels came to the South Bend Community School Corporation in 2016 after receiving his doctorate in educational leadership from Maryville University in St. Louis, Missouri, while working in many administrative positions in school systems in the Midwest. And whereas when Dr. Spels arrived at the South Bend Community School Corporation, there were no A-student, uh, schools during his tenure as superintendent. Two district schools received A grades from the state and reduced the number of failing schools from 14 to 7. And whereas, the South Bend Community School Corporation's district grade from the state improved from a D to a C. And all high schools in the district received a grade of C or better from the state under the leadership of Dr. Kenneth Spels. Additionally, John Adams High School was named as one of the best high schools in the nation. And... Whereas through the Focus 2018 program, Dr. Spels led the way in closing or repurposing underutilized school corporation buildings to use our community's resources as efficiently as possible. The program also included streamlining transportation and creating additional instruction time for elementary students. Whereas, Dr. Spels has increased the South Bend Community School Corporation's community partnerships, and he himself has assisted our broader community in numerous ways during his time here, including serving on boards of United Way of St. Joseph County, Michiana YMCA, and the IUSB Education Advisory Panel. Whereas, Dr. Spels has stated that he wants to make sure he is helping students not only be successful, but do what they love, because when you love what you're doing and you're passionate about it, you're going to be a very productive citizen. And whereas, in his short time here, Dr. Kenneth Spels became a leader in the South Bend community, creating lasting relationships that will benefit our students for years to come."
Section 1. On behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, and as elected members of the Common Council, we are pleased to publicly celebrate and honor Dr. Kenneth Spels. Section 2. Thank you to Dr. Kenneth Spels for all you have done for our citizens and the community of South Bend. We wish him the best as he continues his career. And he will always be remembered, in my opinion, as Team South Bend.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask Dr. Kenneth Spels and members of the South Bend Community School Corporation to join us at the podium, as well as any other individuals who would like to join us at this time. Dr. Spels and members of the South Bend Community School Corporation. Board Trustees. Again, as I stated early on, that it's indeed a privilege and an honor to present this resolution to Dr. Kenneth Spels. And I do ask for your support. But prior to hearing from each and every one of you as council members, I'm gonna ask Dr. Kenneth Spels, if he wished to do so, to give comments, as well as members of the Board Trustees.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. If you would state your name and address.
Yes. And Dr. Kenneth Spels, um, address used to be, 215, South Dr. Martin Luther King Drive.
Thank you.
Well, it's great to be here today. I really appreciate this honor and recognition. Uh, the three years that I was superintendent here, I really enjoyed this community, really enjoyed working with the students. I'm proud of the students that we have in the South Bend School Corporation, and I'm proud of the opportunities that we have provided for them. I'm also proud of the partnerships that we have forged as Team South Bend. I think I said that early on, and that really took off. And it really had meaning to a lot of people in the community, had meaning to me as we worked together to solve problems and also worked together to honor our students. I really appreciate the Board of Trustees, uh, for giving me the best seat in the house for helping students, and appreciate the team that I have, the team of teachers and administrators that I had in this corporation to make our mission and vision, um, tailored to student need. And that's what we've always been about, working with students and making sure the students are successful. So I appreciate this honor, appreciate you and the work that you guys do, um, on a daily basis, and appreciate my team that's here tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else in the school corp that'd like to say something? Please state your name and address.
Yes, Leslie Wesley, 25622 Den Trail. Um, I'd just like to say, on behalf of the South Bend Community School Corporation and School Board of Trustees, um, we'd like to thank you for this honor that you've given, resolution to Dr. Kenneth Spels. It's indeed an honor for him, the three years he's served with us. And we also love the continued partnership that we have with the City of South Bend. I'd just like to say a special thank you to Councilwoman Karen White and to all of the council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Um, Dawn Jones, 602 Cushing Street, South Bend, Indiana. And I'm just delighted to be here and to be a part of this celebration. I do thank Councilwoman Karen White, and I thank Kareem McFowler and all the, all of you on the city council for this opportunity. Dr. Spels has truly been a blessing to our corporation. He has, um, uh, allowed the staff to be creative and free. And he has also welcomed parents and welcomed the community into our corporation. And as a member who has been there for a long time, I hadn't seen that for a long time. So I hope that that continues as Dr. Kenneth comes in, that we continue to have a relationship and to build a stronger relationship. And again, I just wanna thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Super Ten?
I'm Todd Cummings. I took up the residence previously held by Dr. Spels at 215 South Dr. Martin Luther King. And I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Spels for his focus on our students, for how he's engaged our families, and how he made Team South Bend a much better place. Myself and many of us would not be in the positions we are without him. And so I'm grateful for his mentorship, and specifically grateful for what he did to ensure that all of our students learn every single day.
Thank you.
Stanley Brown, 222 East Avastri, City of South Bend. The three years that Dr. Spels has been in the city, uh, for the real good relationship way. It's very special in my heart, and I really feel he's a great leader. But the good thing is, he taught us something, and we're gonna be all right because of his leadership. And, uh, he took a lot of heat also. I remember when my granddaughter got a resolution from the same council. And, uh, someone made a comment that nobody came to support my granddaughter because of Sammy Brown. That's not true. He was everywhere supporting our kids in our community school. And I miss things like that. I know he just kinda just shrugged it off, but he kinda bothered me. Because he loved all the kids at the school system. He was at the football games, basketball games. And I got a lot of respect for him. Uh, he earned that from me. So I want to say nothing but the best. And I hope that, uh, he will always look clean and honest, and let us know whether he's doing a good job or a bad job. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name and address.
Good evening. Mayor Pete Buttigieg with offices on the 14th floor of this building, last time I checked. Um, just very briefly, uh, wanted to add my appreciation to, uh, Dr. Spels for his work. And also to emphasize that, uh, his tenure was marked by a very strong, uh, rhythm of communication between the City of South Bend administration and the school corporation administration. Uh, we had, uh, a regular beat of meetings. We were able to reach each other when there was ever a question of how we could support one another. Uh, and doing that in a way that remains completely, uh, respectful of the independence of the two bodies, and yet recognizes the extent to which we all can, uh, lift each other up. I think set a high bar that we very much hope will be continued into the new administration, uh, both on the schools and the city side. And I just wanted to note that publicly and express my appreciation for that very strong communication and collaboration that took place.
Thanks, sir. We will continue with public and allow anybody else who wants to speak in favor of this resolution to come forth. Seeing none. Anyone wishing to dare speak against? Gotta get past Dawn Jones. Seeing none. We'll bring it back to council for comment. We'll start with Ms. Brode.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Spels, congratulations on this honor, well deserved. Um, your skills, the breadth, the depth, the commitment, um, and really, truly your love, um, for our students, um, my kids included, all three of them. Um, but for our children, uh, community-wide. And then, um, the strength of your relationship and partnership, um, that you have forged throughout the community. I, I think, um, as Mayor Pete said and other, um, members who have already spoken, um, uh, that's a lasting legacy, um, uh, that, that I am particularly grateful for. So, um, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, uh, members, boards, and trustee. And, uh, best wishes to you, uh, in your endeavors.
Uh, Dr. Spels, just thank you for your leadership and, uh, wish you the best in things to come.
Uh, I guess the question is, are we better off, uh, now than we were before you arrived? And I think it's a definitive yes. The school corporation's better, and, uh, the community's better. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Furlic.
Thank you for your service, Dr. Spels.
Ladies, anything else? Finally, from me, Dr. Spels, thank you very much for your, your service. You and I grew up, uh, ran around the same parts, uh, and appreciate, uh, everything that you've done and all the best to you moving forward. So, with that, entertaining motion?
Uh, motion to adopt my proclamation.
Sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Do a quick solo? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have a report from city offices from Mayor Pete Buttigieg. Thank you, sir. No, this is, uh, Mr. Furlic. This is just straight up a report from, uh, the mayor.
Hello again.
Hello.
Um, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, provide an update, too. I thought it was a, a good time for me to share with council some of the work that's been taking place in the community, uh, on the subject of police-community relations. Uh, I wanna thank many council members for having actively been part of various conversations that have been taking place behind the scenes. And I thought this would be a good opportunity, briefly, to make sure the council and the public are aware of the direction that we're moving in. Uh, but also to, uh, collect any questions or, or feedback that we ought to take, uh, up on board from the council as, as we move forward. Of course, the, uh, main reason that we are looking at this with renewed interest and urgency as a city is the officer-involved shooting incident, uh, that led to the death of Eric Logan on June 16th. Uh, and I'll begin by just recapping where we are in terms of the response to that. Uh, this has been referred to an outside special prosecutor. Uh, that's a decision that this administration supports. Uh, we do not know, uh, anything yet about the timeline of that process. What I can tell you is, as soon as that process is concluded, it leads to a second process where the Department of Police will assess whether department policies were followed. If any action is considered warranted based on that, uh, from a disciplinary standpoint, uh, that would be brought to the Board of Safety. I also wanna mention that, uh, I sent a letter to the Department of Justice, uh, inviting, uh, them to, uh, examine what took place. Uh, this is the second time that I've written a letter to the Department of Justice. Uh, you may recall, the first, uh, was when I asked them to, uh, examine the, uh, police tapes in 2012 to see if there were any civil rights concerns there. Uh, they declined at the time, so it's a reminder that we cannot, uh, summon the Department of Justice to do anything, but, uh, they certainly are aware, uh, that we've opened the door for that conversation if they're interested. Uh, also wanna mention that, uh, in addition to questions that were asked in person at the town hall on June 24th, there were a number that were handed in on note cards. Uh, we've now posted responses to all of those questions on the website of the Board of Safety so that anybody interested in more information than was available at that time can, uh, can know where to look. I think where we are now as a community is that in addition to being very concerned about this incident, uh, there is a larger concern that helps to explain, uh, why, uh, so many members of the community spoke out. And that concern remains and requires action regardless of what is determined uh, in the investigative process with regards to the June 16th. And that's making sure we have the best possible and strongest possible relationship and trust between members of the community, uh, especially communities of color, and the department. And so I wanted to, very briefly, walk through some of what we've been doing already, just to make sure that that's been recapped and to acknowledge, uh, the role that's happened in making that possible. Uh, and then, uh, mention some next steps that we're contemplating, some of which will call for some, uh, potential council involvement as we move forward. Uh, several areas that, that, as you know, we've been discussing and working on over the years include community relationships, uh, training, dealing with bias, and seeking to recruit a more diverse department. Also, a, a set of issues and, and activities around accountability and oversight, and a number of updates that have taken place with respect to the policies and the practices of the department. Uh, I don't want to take too much time on this, but did want it on the record that, uh, when it comes to community relations, for example, uh, some of the relationships we now lean on began with the Anti-Violence Commission that, uh, included community members and led to the formation of the GVI, uh, that patrols were reconfigured in 2015 to try to make sure that officers had a deeper relationship with neighborhoods. Uh, a reminder that in 2017, we recruited, uh, experts in psychology to help us understand how to get a better rate of response, uh, from minority applicants, uh, when we were publicizing jobs on the police department. Uh, that, uh, with help from the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, we had a number of, uh, conversations, uh, between, uh, men of color who were often, uh, uh, belonging to groups that, uh, would be expected to have activity relating to police officers, and officers themselves in order to make sure there was better understanding between them. Uh, that, uh, we had an announcement in 2017 about our goal to enhance recruiting, uh, that we had public safety fairs and a number of recruiting activities, uh, that followed on that. That we're working with small businesses, uh, to try to really build up community policing, uh, with respect to, uh, businesses that rely on officers to stop by. And then in 2018, we established a South Bend Police Community Roundtable, which alongside the Steering Committee that oversees GVI, uh, represents a really excellent forum for community conversations to take place about some of the areas that can come between, uh, the police department and many residents, uh, especially residents of color. Uh, and also that, uh, we've, uh, been, uh, pleased to work on the JDAI effort, the Juvenile Detention Alternatives to Incarceration, uh, and that we continue to be interested in ways to address alternatives to incarceration in the city's support. In addition to a number of, uh, community efforts and programs that everyone here is familiar with, uh, but wanted to just list out. When it comes to accountability, transparency, and oversight, our work in recent years has included, uh, publishing the Transparency Hub, which I believe makes us one of the most, uh, transparent departments, uh, in the Midwest in terms of, uh, the ability of cities our size to, uh, move data into public view. Uh, that we have an online complaint process. And the thought here is just that if a citizen has a problem with an officer or an incident that took place, uh, walking into the police department may not be the most inviting way to get, uh, that information or to, uh, have them state some concern. And so, uh, we wanna make sure that that's online as well. Uh, that, uh, we made the Public Information Officer civilian in order to try to enhance information flows. Uh, that there have been updates in how crime is reported. And of course, uh, approximately one year ago, uh, there was the introduction of body-worn cameras, uh, which is something that, uh, we will continue to develop. Uh, this in addition to, um, activities that are underway from the continued role of the Board of Safety, which I'll mention in, in more detail in a moment. Uh, and, uh, also, uh, a number of steps that we're taking to just deal with the backlog and, uh, discipline cases that had built up in past years. And then on the policies and practice, uh, front, that there's been work to streamline and reorganize the department. This is based on recommendations from, uh, the Riesling Group, which was brought in to do, uh, an assessment of how the department was organized. Uh, that the, uh, Office of Diversity and Inclusion has spent a considerable amount of its time working with and supporting our department. That, uh, the diversity awareness profile is one example of, uh, a tool that the department has used for training and assessment to try to make sure that there is cultural awareness and, uh, awareness of bias in the practices of the department. Uh, that we really changed, uh, in a pretty thorough way, how officer performance review takes place, uh, including attention to cultural competency as part of how officers are evaluated in their job performance. Uh, that in 2018, after extensive work, uh, with, uh, the organization Lexi Poll, which, uh, has conducted this work around the country, uh, there was an update to the duty manual that formalized and standardized a number of department practices. Uh, that there's been an expansion in the division of the department responsible for recruitment and training. Uh, that enhanced training has included department participation in the work on sexual harassment. Uh, and that, uh, the promotions process, uh, which really needed to be, uh, professionalized and, and modernized beyond past practice, uh, has now become, uh, I would say, much more rigorous and included, uh, many more, I think, best practices, uh, as we go forward. So all of this is to say that the work that is, uh, sought by the community and undertaken by the administration in these areas is not new, uh, but it needs to be renewed. And it needs to be refocused, uh, based on the fact that, uh, we still have a long way to go in establishing the, the trust that we think is so important in this community. And that, uh, we've gotten more community feedback that will help us continue to work to get this right. And we mentioned a number of steps that the administration is looking at right now. The first is, uh, an extended role for the Board of Safety, uh, which has authority under Indiana law on a great deal of police matters. Uh, looking to the Board of Safety, we're going to initiate a process in which the community, uh, can get a better look and weigh in on proposed revisions to some of the most relevant policies that the department has. Uh, that we wanna make sure we are, uh, doing the best we possibly can with responses to incidents and the processes we have for things like an officer-involved shooting. and the processes we have for things like an officer-involved shooting, as well as the complaint process itself. That we have an opportunity to look over what we're doing with training and how we can do it better. That there's a great deal of interest in this community on anti-violence work more broadly. I know several council members have been expressing a desire for more work here and showing leadership in that regard. That we obviously, as I have acknowledged publicly, are not where we should be in our success in recruiting and retaining diverse officers, and that we need stepped-up work above and beyond what we've done in that regard. That I'm contemplating a total review of the police department that would build on what we've done before. I'll explain this more in a moment. And last, that we may need to look at additional steps to make sure we have the right structure and configuration to support good work in the department. So first, on the Board of Safety. One thing I want to mention is that, as of today, on the website of the Board of Safety, you can find an application form for appointments. Typically, appointments by a mayor to a board or commission are simply made at-will by a decision that takes place in the mayor's office, but this is the best mechanism we have for community members to step up and play a leadership role in police and, for that matter, all public safety matters. And so what I've realized is that while Indiana law calls on the mayor to make these decisions, we could make these decisions with more community input. What you'll see online is a relatively simple form that invites various community members to apply. One thing that we want to make sure it captures is the desire for some show of community support, even though this is not an elected position. And so we're requesting that an applicant gather at least 25 signatures of community members supporting their application to be on the board. And I would note that there is, among the five members of the board, currently one vacancy right now, and so we will be applying this renewed or newly imagined process to fill that vacancy that's underway at this time. I'll also be asking the Board of Safety to host a series of discussions that will allow for an opportunity both to educate the public and for the public to educate us on what is most desired when it comes to some of the most important and sensitive policies in the department, as well as the work we've been talking about just a moment ago on training, community relations, retention, and recruitment. I think we need to do more to make sure community members are aware that, just like a council meeting, a Board of Safety meeting is open to the public and an opportunity for public scrutiny of police and other public safety processes. And I think we should ask whether we could be giving our Board of Safety members more support. They do participate in trainings, but one thing, and I'm mentioning this because it could have budget implications, would be to ask if we should fund more trainings or more staffing to support board members in their work. And I would like for this review process to take place very quickly, and so by late summer, early fall, hopefully we'll be able to report back and make some decisions. Let me dig in just a little on the community policy review concept. So the idea here is that the Board of Safety would lead a number of sessions, but we would seek to have as much community participation as possible. It's also a good opportunity to ask people who work on these issues around the country, knowing that we are not the only city wrestling with these matters, to let us know what they observe or what they think we should take into account. I know right away that there are three areas of policy that are of particular interest. We publish these policies on the Transparency Portal online. They include the policy guiding how body-worn cameras are to be used, the policy guiding how forces to be used, and I wanted to also invite the community to look at the policies governing vehicle pursuits, since we know that is another scenario where we have a high likelihood relative to routine police work of community members being at risk and police officers being at risk. And the idea, again, is to undertake policy revisions that we could act on sooner rather than later. Another thing I want to mention is that now is a good time for us to look at how we handle incidents and complaints. We did review this after the officer-involved shootings that took place about a year ago. The feedback we got from the community at the time was that it was important to address the public right away, even if we didn't have much information, and that it was important to have community dialogue before and not just after an incident. That led to us handling this most recent incident differently in terms of getting with the public right away, and it helped me to the Police Community Roundtable. But I think it's fair to ask what else we could be doing, and while we hope this is not a scenario that will come up again, making sure we have a written protocol for what we would do the day of an incident. We should also look at whether this community is happy with the current process that refers officer-involved shootings to the Metro Homicide Unit for outside review. While this is administratively a distinct department, it is also the case that not everyone in the community views this as fully an outside-in look. I think now is the time for us to ask whether there are other forms of outside review that would be preferred to the current process that we have. And I also wanted to mention that there may be other ways to take civilian complaints or concerns onboard, so that there is a full sense of opportunity for people with issues with the department without any appearance or fear of being at a disadvantage because they did so, to feel that they have been heard. And this is where I'm going to mention citizen involvement. While the Board of Safety is, in Indiana, the ultimate authority on many of these matters, there may be ways we can augment or supplement or support that with citizen involvement or citizen review. So, again, I mentioned the policy areas we talked about. We should also make sure that we are confident in our training procedures. I can tell you, they are dramatically enhanced compared to where we would have been at the beginning of this decade, but that does not mean we have completed the journey. And I think this is another area where we can have an open public discussion, both informing the public about how training works and gathering public input about how training could work better. These are just some of the areas that I think we might look at: cultural competency, de-escalation to prevent violence, and bias prevention. And again, we want to make sure that both community members and any outside experts with something to offer us can have their voices heard. Of course, community members aren't only concerned about incidents that involve police officers. There are, there remain far too many cases of gun violence on a regular basis in this community between civilians and other civilians, and that's why we need to make sure we are adequately resourcing the group violence intervention and the SAFE program. I do want to mention and credit both these efforts and the police department for the fact that a number of situations where there was concern of some kind of violence taking place on July 4th or over this last weekend appear to have been avoided. And while any number of incidents greater than zero is unacceptable, we do believe this is making a difference. I also have heard from council members that the Peacemakers Initiative that some community members traveled to Detroit to learn more about could be a promising supplement to this work, and wanted to signal that the administration is very open to that conversation, as well as about other steps we can take to deal with gun violence in our community. When it comes to recruiting, I want to remind the community that we have broken out where we get and lose applicants at every stage of the application process, including a breakdown by ethnicity, and we published this on the Transparency Hub in order to make sure we get community input on how we can make sure that we're doing a better job of recruiting and retaining officers who reflect our community. We have some new steps that are about to be undertaken. One that I applaud the Police Command staff for developing is to deal with the fact that, even though we have things like the Cadet and Explorer Program, they time out when you're 18 and you graduate, but we can't bring an officer onboard until you're 21. The Homegrown Project and other efforts that they're undertaking look at ways that we could provide meaningful work in those three years so we don't lose track of somebody that we have been guiding into a career in law enforcement. And we'll be doing some work on social media, too, to try to attract more recruiting. My challenge to the community and to the council is imagine what it would mean if everybody in this room were able to identify three to five individuals, qualified diverse applicants, by the end of this year, and bring them to apply to the police department. Again, we have not succeeded bluntly with the efforts we've undertaken to date, and I don't think we will unless every one of us regards ourselves as a recruiter for the police department, and so I very much invite support from community and council members on that. I mentioned this idea of a departmental review, and again, the thought here is that there may be more that we can learn, both to validate things that have gone well and to identify areas where we've got more work to do. We did something like this in the administrative review that the Riesling Group did in 2016. Very much helped us undertake a number of steps under Chief Ruskowski's leadership to reorganize the department's org chart. Chief Ruskowski also participated in President Obama's 21st Century Policing Task Force. While that disbanded at the end of the administration, many of the people who were leaders in that effort continue to work in ways that serve cities, and we have an opportunity to engage them. I'm currently discussing this with the police department leadership, and will be giving thought to this in the coming days. I'm flagging this because if we want a review to be delivered by the end of the year 2019 so that it could be available for the new mayoral administration and the new council to run with, we would really need to have an appropriation. Quite soon, we would probably file it for first reading at the next council meeting. So we're continuing to gauge whether this is the right answer for the community and for the department, but am interested in those possibilities and would not be able to do it without council support for funding that effort. I also just want to flag that this cannot be separated from the 2020 budget. So whether it's SAFE, GBI, or Peacemakers, whether it's next steps on body-worn cameras, we have them across regular patrol right now, but there may be other enhancements, either in terms of having more officers equipped with cameras or technologies we don't yet have. One that's of particular interest is a technology that would automatically begin recording when a weapon is removed from its holster, no matter what the circumstance. In any case, this is something that is also likely to make its way into the budget conversation. I mentioned earlier the Board of Safety, the need for training and perhaps staffing. And on the staffing note, I'm also evaluating whether we should return to the conversation about a public safety director in the administration. It's something we explored last year. I think it has promise in allowing for there to be policy support that's different from the day-to-day work that either chief or that the mayor does, and that may or may not be part of the answer to how we adequately staff the Board of Safety. But I just want to mention it because I'll be interested to know if council members have more appetite than there was last year for considering this position. And again, I just want to emphasize that because so much of this relates to policy in the city as a whole, we will welcome and seek council input and council support at every step. The bottom line is, we need to be dealing with this at three levels, each bigger than the last. Making sure we properly respond to the individual incident that has a family grieving right now in South Bend. Making sure we deal with the broader question of police-community relations that have so many feeling such urgency that goes far beyond what happened on Father's Day, and frankly, will remain a concern, no matter what the investigations reveal, and is something we can and must be working on right now before any of those processes take place. And lastly, the fact that you can't separate this from the bigger question about racial inequality in our community, that if we really want to tackle some of the causes of mistrust and inequity, that everything from jobs to housing needs to be in our scope. And while this is, again, not new to the administration or to the council, we might renew our attention to it, and this, too, might have implications in the 2020 budget. So I appreciate the chance to review these matters with you. Would be happy to take any feedback or questions, whether now is an appropriate time or in the coming days and weeks offline as we continue to move forward as a community.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll just do two quick questions per council member. Ms. McBride, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions. I just have comments.
Just, okay.
You can ask questions if you want to or come back.
Comments, fine.
I'm pleased with the information that we've given to reflect and remember some of the things that we have done in the past, because a lot of people in the community are not aware, and yet I agree, there's a lot more that we need to do. And speaking about families hurting and the community being harmed, definitely a lot of work to do. And I just think one of the ways of building the trust and bridging the gap back in the community is making sure that the community is engaged with the police. So I'm not being fearful of them, but continuing to engage. And one of the things that I spoke about last week was, currently, we have the PAV program, the Police Athletic League, and I know it's not talked about a lot. I've been a part of the boxing league over there for eight years, and I know that they have free sports, and they teach lifelong lessons to the youth, and they're actively engaged. They volunteer their time doing it. They have lunch for the kids, tutoring, mentoring. They teach tennis women lessons, basketball, you name it. And what better way to have our youth engaged with the police, especially at a young age, so they can grow up not having that fear? And so I think those are some of the, and that's just one program, but there's many, and there's many out there that we can continue to build upon with other initiatives as well. So I'm very interested in making sure to be a part of that process, and definitely agree, being the director of a correctional facility, that incarceration is high and rapid, and there's a lot of needs that people need coming out of prison, and making sure that our social services are wrapped around adequately and resources are made available. So I'm all for making sure that we are bridging those gaps.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for attending tonight and the very informative information. I have about 10 things that, so there will be some stuff offline just to communicate those to you, and thank you for, in advance, for your response, your willingness to respond to those. Two things, though, that kind of pop out in terms of what you've presented today. It seems as if there's a lot of latitude and with regard, it's sort of like the local control with the Board of Public Safety, and I appreciate the direction that you're going to expand that and, you know, onboard more members of the community and aspects of training, you know, and support to the existing members, et cetera. And I love that to be the, you know, the point of emphasis that you have brought tonight and look forward to how that plays out. So thank you for your insight into expanding that role. With regard to the contemplation of a departmental review, I think it's always important when you look, you know, two consultants, four reviews. Obviously, the scope of what you're looking to find, right, or what you're looking to study is important. So I think just as you have set forth, I think, a plan here, broad strokes, and a plan to involve community members, that that process in terms of what are we looking for, what's the RFP, what's the scope of that review, that that, those questions, those, you know, those points that we're going to be looking at, actually also be perhaps equally inclusive of the community in that determination. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for being here tonight. I think the events of the last several weeks have weighed heavy on us all as council members, as I know they have on you, and so thank you for the administration's renewed focus on some of these issues. Again, there are many things, so there'll be some things offline, and it's a lot to digest at this moment. One thing I would like to point out and mention, and especially in light of the budget process steamrolling ahead, right, that I believe, and maybe we can talk about this a little bit more, but I believe that we need to budget for more officers. I know that there's, it's more than just a budgetary issue, but having spent some time over the last several weeks talking with some of our officers, I do believe that if we had more of them, right, more quality-trained folks on the force, some of these things, these community engagement pieces, would be a lot easier to do. And the force would be a lot less spread then, and these folks would have a little bit more freedom to engage and create those bridges and relationships in the community. So I'd like to see that. I know, again, there's academy capacity issues, there's recruiting issues, there's a lot that goes into that. I'd like to see us signal our commitment to that by budgeting an increase in positions this year, and I will work, as long as I'm here, if I'm here next year, with the next administration, with you, with Chief Ruskowski, to make sure that we can fill those positions.
Thank you. By the way, Ms. McBride, 433 kids are in the summer sports program with the police right now.
Awesome.
Mr. Ward.
Mayor, thank you for the report. I'm not embarrassed to say, I feel like standing up and applauding the steps you've taken. We, as council members, as citizens of this community, know that, first of all, recognize, as you do, the problems. We know there are no quick fixes. I'm glad you recounted some of the things that have been done in your tenure here as -- mayor, and I hope that citizens in general will accept the fact that it's going to take their involvement and their help to solving the unacceptable level of violence in the community. So again, I applaud your efforts, your administration's efforts, and I think any comment on this kind of thing shouldn't go without complimenting the men and women on the Police Department already who are in a very difficult, very stressful situation on a day-to-day basis and I think almost universally are probably doing the best job they can, given the resources they have. For some time, I have thought, as Councilman Teska has mentioned, that we would be well-served by additional members of the Police Department to, if, to make our community engagement, involvement practices, you know, even more effective. So thank you for everything you've done, everything you're doing, and it's going to take a commitment on all our parts to make this a success, and I'm confident that we can do it.
No questions, just thank you for the update.
Switek?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to thank you for the update and for the overview that you've given to the council, but also to the public and the media. I'm very grateful that you have indicated that the scope of the issues that are before us are more than just looking at the Police Department, but the equity that's needed in our community at all levels. Also, I do have some questions and some feedback, and I will email those to you, but I would also ask that the council members that you share your concerns and what you would like to see as we move forward. Most of you are aware that we will be starting the budget process very shortly, but also as we look at the priorities and the policies and then we look at the budget, I think that we have to be very clear on what those priorities are, and then most importantly, what outcomes do we hope to achieve. I do agree that it's not going to be solved in the next 90, 120 days. We have to make a commitment that we're in this for the long haul, and then we have to make a commitment that this is our city. I'm not saying that others have not made that commitment, but we're all in this together. This is a community issue. Unfortunately, it's disproportionate in certain neighborhoods, but we're better than what we have experienced, and South Bend is a very strong city, and by us working together, we can move forward and have a positive impact.
Thank you, Vice President White. Mayor, as you and I have talked several times, you know, as I said in one of the very first press conferences, as we're watching the process, how the process is changing, we appreciate everything that you're putting together here. As I've said, we can stand or fall with this. We can make our community better with actions, with policies, with the processes that are here, and I agree, we all need to do recruiting for the Police Department, from those who consider themselves activists to all of us, whatever your level activist is. We all need people for the Police Department, and that's how we're going to have diversity. We all need to do that recruiting. I also want to remind council members, I'll send out an email tomorrow. We had a press conference last week where we talked about the things that we were all going to tackle and try to drive, and I'd like to gather those up, make sure we have them, and then help each other. We're nine strong, we help each other to accomplish those goals as well with the administration. I cannot say enough about the Peacemakers Conference. I know that I've been in your ear since we've been back two weeks ago, that Councilmember McBride and Vice President White and I attended. The expansion of what I would say GBI and the group, the SAVE group, is doing is, it's amazing. And Mayor, I can't stress that enough, I can't tell you enough on that, that we need to look into that, have more, you know, Devon Bogans come here and do a presentation to us and understand what's going on. Isaac Hudson, the audience and his wife, and what they're doing is just amazing, the work. And what it comes down to is that work one-on-one, on the ground, face-to-face with people that maybe I can't relate to or anybody else can relate to, but we all need to. And I've said it before, frustration here is wanting a better South Bend, and I know there's people frustrated on all angles, but the thing is, they want a better South Bend. And if anything comes out of this, is that a better South Bend for everybody. So I want to thank you again for your report.
Terrific, thanks for the opportunity.
And we'll be in touch.
For following up.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
President Scott, I think I should know.
Ms. McBride?
When you stated about the 433 number for PAL, can you get the racial makeup for that?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Because I still think that's the difference between the communities that we serve. It doesn't look like the community, so how do we get the minorities to get a part of it properly?
I agree. All right.
Thank you.
I encourage you all to stay in touch with the mayor's office, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
President Scott, I forgot to make mention that we were able, some councilwoman Sharon McBride and I, we went to the Wake for the Young Man that lost his life at Kelly's, and I made sure that his mother approached the two of us and wanted to make sure that we would remember him as well as Mr. Eric Logan.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that point. Okay, we will move on with our regularly scheduled program. I do want to make an announcement. Bill Substitute 1519 regarding zoning to the Central Business District is continued to 7/22. If you have any questions regarding that bill or any concerns to that, would you please address them to Councilperson Joe Roden by Friday this week, 7:12?
Noon.
Noon. Noon at 7:12. And we will be, Kareem and I think what we'll need to do is put out a press release on that too tomorrow, let everybody know.
The zoning 1519?
Yep. Yep. And I'll get with you tomorrow morning on that. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to rise and join the Committee of the Whole. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's now Mr. Roden's turn.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance and item on the agenda, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition of the petition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes, and with that, will the clerk please read Bill 1419?
1419, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 1, Basic Provisions, Article 2, Residential Districts, Article 7, General Regulations, and Article 11, Definitions to Add, New SF3 Residential Flex District.
I'll entertain a motion to consider the substitute version of 1419.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Substitute version presentation, go ahead.
Sir, committee report?
Ah, committee report, that's my committee, that's why. Or, I mean, I was sitting in as chair of that committee. The Zoning and Annexation Committee gave this a favorable recommendation to full council.
Good job. So.
Thanks. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 11th floor of this building. The petitioner is requesting to add a new district to the city of South Bend zoning ordinance, the SF3 Residential Flex District. This ordinance was drafted to establish a district to provide diverse housing types in urban neighborhood centers by allowing for the development of the missing middle units on the housing spectrum between detached single-family and mid-rise apartment buildings. This ordinance will allow the construction of a mixture of single-family housing, multifamily housing up to four units, and accessory dwelling units in walkable neighborhoods. This ordinance does not rezone specific property to this district, but will facilitate the option to address these being, to address these housing needs in South Bend. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, and I'll turn it over to D.C.I.
Thank you for that report. Proceed.
Good evening, Michael LaVita, Principal Planner with Department of Community Investment, offices on the 14th floor of this building. As Jordan introduced, this ordinance would introduce the SF3 district, which would allow for a missing middle housing type. So again, there's a house-scale building, so multifamily units that blend in well with single-family neighborhoods. So missing middle covers the gap between detached single-family homes and larger town home and apartment development. So our current SF1 and SF2 zones speak well to that detached single-family product. They allow, by special exception, duplexes. So again, SF1 and SF2 collectively cover about half of the land area of the city, and 83% of the land where residential use is permitted by zoning happens in those districts. So our only single-family homes, which probably not reflective of the market. We have MF1, MU, and CBD zones, and handle some of those more intense housing developments, but we're really trying to introduce here is that missing middle that's not covered under our zoning ordinance currently. That's what SF3 would do. So what kind of housing type are we looking at? Using some South Bend examples and various configurations, that could be duplexes, triplexes, could be quads, it could also be accessory dwelling units. You see here a property called Mother Law Suites, Brandy Flats, backyard cottages, garage apartments, carriage houses, or the domed cottage courts, which are generally smaller housing units grouped around a central green. So why is this important? To give the housing choice to really meet the market demand in our community. It provides opportunity for aging-in-place or intergenerational living as the elderly population grows and provide a unit that provides some sense of independent living, but one in which family is nearby. That could also work for disabled individuals or for individuals who are kind of starting out on their own, a recent college graduate, or someone who is not entering the workforce. A key advantage here is on affordability. These units tend to be a little bit smaller in size, grouped together with other units that kind of changes the economics as you're sharing land, you're sharing building walls, you're sharing the cost of development when new construction occurs. Also allows for the opportunity for wealth creation. A single-family property owner may already have that property and they can add an accessory dwelling unit, for instance, that they can rent out, or perhaps as a new construction, they might consider a duplex where they live in half, rent out the other half to help defray mortgage costs. What we think is great here is that allows for what's sometimes termed gentle density, so you can add a little bit more housing options and population into a neighborhood, but really maintain the existing character that's there. And with that additional population growth, then that would better support neighborhood-level commercial development and transit services in the community. And we've heard in the community through our meetings and also talks with developers, whether it's at large scale or kind of a small-scale developer looking to do something next door to his house, that this kind of housing type would be helpful to have. So on specifics, what it would allow is anywhere from one to four housing units plus an accessory dwelling unit to be allowed by right. So in a zone SF3, we would expect to see sort of a range of housing types, starting at single-family home. This is really looking especially to new construction, particularly on infill vacant lots in the city, so it's not to push for conversion of existing housing units into multiple units. The path of that would remain the same as it is today through a special exception. In terms of what uses would be allowed in SF3, we just match totally what's allowed in SF2. The development standards, so talking on setbacks and building heights, et cetera, it's kind of a blend of the SF2 and MF1 standards, which in that spectrum you saw earlier, is right where this falls. So the proposal here tonight won't zone any particular land, but it will open up the possibility for people to seek this rezoning for these kinds of projects. And I'll mention, since it came up in committee meeting, just on historic properties, so if a property falls within a local historic district, then there's a strict appropriateness required through the SART Preservation Commission for any demolition or for any new construction. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Before we go to the public portion, are there any questions from council members? Okay, then we'll give the public an opportunity to weigh in. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this bill?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Brian McMorro, speaking on behalf of the Home Builders Association of St. Joseph Valley, 105 East Grove Street, Mishawaka. I want to reiterate the support from the Home Builders Association that we made at Area Plan Commission earlier today in committee. The home builders, design professionals, realtors, vendors that make up the home builders of St. Joseph Valley are really excited about this new district and the opportunity that it provides. We are grateful for the work that the staff on the 14th floor is doing in the D.C.I., to listen, to engage, and then be very proactive in creating tools like this that are going to help serve a portion of our population that's been underserved. So we look for your support to help build, literally build, a better South Bend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak opposed? We'll go to the council portion?
Make motion to send sub 1419 to full council favorably. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes to council favorably. 1519 is continued.
Make a motion to continue sub 1519 to 7/22. Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's continued, 7/22. That's it.
Motion to rise and resolve from the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Third reading, Ms. Fowler, would you please give third reading to sub 1419?
1419, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 1, Basic Provisions, Article 2, Residential Districts, Article 7, General Regulations, and Article 11, Definitions to Add a New SF3 Residential Flex District.
Motion for passage to the substitute.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Jill?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Roden?
Aye.
Councilmember Furland?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1945?
1945, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for property located at 407, 411, 419, 423, and 427 South Creek Street.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
There certainly is. The Zoning and Annexation Committee met earlier today and gave this a favorable recommendation to full council? No? We did not?
No.
No recommendation, just because the petitioner was not present.
We gave a favorable no recommendation.
Thank you. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 11th floor of this building. The petitioner is requesting a special exception use for two-family dwellings at the site at the addresses listed. The reason for this, even though the house, the, each unit will have single ownership, the lotline will go through the middle, and by definition, it's still a two-family dwelling. Here's a site plan for that. As you can see, the shared wall in the middle of those dwellings. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area board of zoning appeals. And the petitioner is here.
Is petitioner here?
Yes.
They would. Step up, please state your name and address, and just give a brief description of the area.
Yeah, David Stradzki, Century Builders, 314 West Kethelpa Avenue, Mishawaka. This is part of the Greater Riverwalk development down on the old transport site. This would be right south of the townhomes we have, and this would be a product type that would fit between a townhome and a single-family house, a duplex. And right now, it requires a special exemption through the council. We're hoping that this would have been a perfect project for the SF3. We're hoping that this would have been a perfect project for the SF3 on the whole. So that's why I'm excited about the zoning change.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the presenter or the petitioner?
Just comment.
Nope.
Comment? Oh, sorry.
We'll wait. Any other questions? Nope, we'll open up the public. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone who's speaking against, please come to the podium. Back to Ms. Broden for her comment now.
Sorry that it took us so long, but thanks for your development, Mr. Scharadsky.
All right.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Techka?
Aye.
Councilmember Hordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Move first readings. Ms. Fowler, please read 2019.
2019, First Regulon Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Supplementing and Amending Ordinance Number 9937-9 for the purpose of authorizing the modification of certain contractual rights of the city, the execution and delivery of the amended Waterworks Revenue Fund of 2009, Series B, and approving certain related matters in connection therewith.
Motion to send to Personnel and Finance for 7/22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 2119, please.
2119, First Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Various Articles and Sections of Chapter 5 of the South Bend Municipal Code, generally known as Responsible Animal and Pet Ownership Care Control Regulations by Updating Entity Name, Definitions, License Requirements, and Fee Regulations.
Move that this be sent to Health and Public Safety for their meeting on 7/22.
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, 2319, please.
2319, First Hearing on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departamental and City Services Operations in 2019 of $500,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund 408.
Move that this also be sent to Health and Public Safety for their meeting on 7/22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there anything on our unfinished business?
Why is that Health and Public Safety person?
Seeing, anything on their new business?
Sorry, why is that, excuse questions, why is that Phil, Health and Public Safety?
You know what? It is wrong. It is, I wrote it down wrong.
You were right, sorry, yeah.
Wrong instruction. I apologize.
Motion to send 2319 to Personnel and Finance.
procedurally, do we have to undo the vote?
Do the first one.
All right.
Motion to send 2319 to Personnel and Finance for 7/22.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Joe, you didn't have enough to deal with the analysts. All right, anything on our unfinished business?
Yes, with regard to the press release that's going out tomorrow, I'd like to actually have an opportunity to look at that.
Yep.
And then also, I think what might be helpful is if perhaps the clerk's office could help us with creating a folder that would give easy access to the bill itself and the various powerpoints from the administration, please.
I would agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything on our new business?
Yes.
Ms. Broden.
Thank you again. The South Bend Animal Care and Control will meet Wednesday night, this Wednesday, I should say, and there are some items that are coming up on the agenda before council. And I would like as Health and Public Safety Chair to alert the public that, not alert, but to let the public know that we will be conducting meetings as a committee of the council to look at those changes.
Great, thank you.
So I will be working with the clerk staff and the members of the Health and Public Safety Committee to schedule those in the very near future.
Mr. President, point of inquiry, or point of order, I was notified that it was actually the 11th, 7/11 is the South Bend Animal Care and Control.
So we need to do a...
I defer to the mayor's office.
It's Thursday?
Thursday. Oh, Thursday, my fault. Oh, you're saying, I'm sorry, the actual meeting, not the bill. Okay, great. I know what you were correcting, thank you, Graham. I appreciate that.
Okay, we good? Anything else for new business? Seeing none, we'll turn to Privilege and Floor. This is where anybody can come to the council, speak for three whole minutes to the common council on anything that was not on the agenda tonight. So cannot be on the agenda tonight. That includes even the mayor. You can let the council know what you want to say, and we'll take a look at it, and if it needs to be assigned to a committee, we'll do that, or turned over to the administration. With that, please give your name and address, and go ahead.
Yes.
Gavin, sorry, Gavin Furley will time you, and he'll give you like a 30-second exit warning.
Okay. Yes, my name is Mrs. Felisa Williams. I live at 1338 Johnson Street, South Bend, Indiana. In my neighborhood, it has changed drastically. I've been over there close to 30 years, and I have a drug problem that's living right next door to me, and it's sad that every day that I come home, I have to, I have people on my property, six or seven cars, and I end up having to try to get the people off. So, being told that I would be shot and killed if I come on their property, I have to call the police at least four to five times a week. There's traffic running 24/7, foot and cars, in the front and in the back. And I want to know what's, what can be done about it. I can't have my immediate family come over because they don't want to be involved in that type of activity. My son lives out in Granger, he comes, Terrence Walker, he comes over every other day to check on me because of the situation. Police has been involved, keen and lame. I've talked to him numerous times about the person. All they say is that we're monitoring the situation. So I'm looking at, eventually someone's going to get hurt when a drug, drug deal goes bad, because people are tapping, I can hear them, they're tapping at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. So, I want something to be done about it. And I have contacted the police. The police has been out numerous times, I'll stop counting. And this has been going on for two and a half years.
Stick around, I'll talk to you right after this. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next name and address, sir.
My name is George Jones, I live at 256 North Sheridan Street. Once again, I'm speaking to you on Parkus Residence, 302 South Falcon Street. And as I drive by there, I drove by there this evening, and I noticed that nothing has changed, you know, the grass is still as high as it always has been. I'm concerned, as I addressed your last, last conference meeting about this particular property, and the, and the effect that it has on the neighborhood, I cannot, I cannot understand how someone can send and get a $20 permit to have an animal sanctuary in the midst of a residential area. We don't have any ordinance that, that governs what can be in a particular area. You know, it just baffles me that it seems like nothing can be done, you know. We're talking about beautifying our neighborhood, we're talking about having pride in our neighborhood, then someone moves in and, and takes upon themselves to have an animal sanctuary in the middle of a residential area? That's horrible, absolutely horrible. I talked about all the roads and everything else that will gravitate to that particular location. Obviously, that's what he wants, but that's not what our community wants.
Right.
It's eyesore, I talked to the person across the street, he's apologetic for what has occurred, because he's the one that sold out to the particular person. And so, you know, it, it boozes me that we are, have to deal with type of situation within our community. We take pride in where we live, you know. I'm sure you take pride in where you live. I'm sure you would not have wanted to have this type of situation in the middle of your residential area. As I told, as I said before, you know, we have children that play in that particular area, that go up and down that street, you know. I don't know what's, what resides in those, in those weeds. Not only that, but I'm also concerned about the 1,000 houses, as I spoke about last time, and the, the fields that are vacant and seem like we don't have enough manpower to take care of those properties. You know, you know, it's just poor planning on behalf of our mayor to take and tear down 1,000 houses, and yet we have, we're faced with another dilemma. You know, grass going everywhere. You know, you're talking about community pride, you know, how can you have pride when you got weeds everywhere you're turning to? You know, everywhere you look, you're exposed to property that are vacant and just, just weeds that are growing, you know, and they're right next to residential areas. Thank you for listening. I hope I didn't, it didn't fall on deaf ears.
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come to the podium.
Joseph Jones, 605 Don Meyer Avenue. I miss this woman's name, but her story kind of ties into what I was going to talk about, which is, I grew up, and I spent a lot of time in the 1900s, like Johnson Street when I was a kid in the 90s. It really wasn't any different. It's, it's the same story. We've all seen the footage of the vehicle going down porch with the person outside the window shooting. Somebody caught that on a home camera. I think the city and the police department got to be as willing as they can be to work with people who have cameras, that the police department has no program for registering cameras, because we see with the violence in the city. And there's nobody that doesn't feel that, even if it's not affecting you directly, you see it, and you understand that that's affecting the fabric of the city. I think that the best we can do in the face of that is a couple of things. One is to counsel and comfort people when they're in a time of loss, if somebody unfortunately loses a family member. The other is to investigate thoroughly. Some of the rhetoric that goes on, I think, makes it harder for people to want to, in some situations, report to the police. And then, of course, there's conditions in some areas that are, as she spoke of, prohibitive of people reporting things to the police in certain situations. I've spoken with Jake a couple times about the fact that the rhetoric that goes around with this stuff that's going on is, is not doing anything to help. What's going to help is whoever's on one end or the other of a gun, when there's a violent crime committed, or a knife, or anything else, we have to investigate what happens. Because if not, there's not going to be peace in the city, especially a city of this size. And, and I think about the Board of Public Safety, something has to change, obviously, in the whole process of policing and everything, because the Board of Public Safety doesn't need to be every month, or every couple months, or every, you know, regularly having to deal with issues with the policing. That right there lets us know that we have an issue with the policing.
We have 30 seconds.
With that, I'm just going to go ahead and yield back, so I'll run over. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Brenda Bailey, and I'm with South Bend Lost and Found Pets. And without discussing what was in the ordinance...
Be very careful.
Yes. I would like to extend the invitation to you all for transparency, communication, open dialogue through the whole entire process. We work well with the City of South Bend, South Bend Animal Care and Control, and we'd like to continue that relationship and keep it as smooth as it can be. So if we can have that privilege of that communication back and forth, I think it would be a wonderful gesture and thing, so. That's all.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate that reach out. With that, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.